We all fall?
Sort of.
Sort of?
I don't even know if I'm supposed to be here.
Why not?
I don't know. I can't say anything, so.
That's okay, your mask will just fall off anyway.
Okay.
Okay. We'll call the order of the Lowell City Council work session for Tuesday, July 7th at seven oh five. Roll call, please.
Mayor Bennett?
There.
Council Myers?
Here.
Council Harris?
Here.
Council Stratus?
President.
Council Draw.
Here.
Okay. Tonight we'll have a work session at the end of the, when it's adjourned, at the end of it, we'll have a special meeting. Mowing the work session. During the special meeting, we'll have the executive session. And then we'll come back into the special session, make any actions needed, and then before we adjourn. First thing up is number one recruitment and the interim city administrator. Mr. Cobb?
Mayor Benton Council, so we have Marcia Miller here. And yeah, definitely come on up. And so this is intended to be pretty informal. I've got a couple of questions. And then I would turn it over to council to ask some questions you might have. Just to give you a quick, some quick background. Last week, we did provide Marcia with a tour of the library, city hall. And she also was able to meet with Joyce and with Max as well. So she's kind of gotten a feel a little bit for the city. And with that, I think I will turn it over to Marcia, if you'd just want to tell us a little bit about yourself.
Sure. Well, first off, I'm retired. I retired about three years ago from Lynn County. Prior to that, I was the public works director at Lynn County for eight years. And prior to that, I was at the city of Eugene, I managed the city permit information center. Which included like planning and building and solid waste and recycling. And of course, the county, I had parks and roads and, you know, everything that was under the county jurisdiction. I was, I got a call from Alcog and they asked if I might be interested in helping out in interim. As a city administrator for Lowell. I, I did that once before, last year actually at the city of Oak Ridge. For about three months. And, you know, I actually found it, I don't know, it sort of energized my brain, even though I love being retired. So this was very appealing, actually this was more appealing, quite honestly, than, Oak Ridge had a lot of problems. I know that you guys were doing great here from everything I hear. This is a fabulous place. Things are happening. You know, there aren't a lot of issues. I realized though, I mean, one thing is, I don't know anything about your processes or. I just want to be perfectly honest with you, I would probably need a lot of help starting off to understand the process and all your systems and. And kind of get a sense of that. But I, I feel, I've been manager for many, many years. I think that I've done a, a pretty good job. I'm really a people person, I'm all about people getting together and working, you know, working together and working things out. I've had some really challenging personnel issues in my tenure at the county and the city and even in Oak Ridge. Which no one ever looks forward to. But, you know, they have to be dealt, you know, and I know that my sense is here, there isn't any of that either. So my goal would be if I could help you facilitate getting yourself a permanent city administrator. I mean, I think, I mean, maybe you have a different priority and of course you would be my bosses. But I would think that that would be, that would be, I would assume that would be my top priority. That was one of the tasks that I needed to do when I was in Oak Ridge. And I worked with Alcog. They provided a lot of assistance and we did, you know, in three months actually get a, a very good city administrator. He's still there, Brian's still there, I think things are going well. So I'm pleased about that. So anyway, that's, I, I'm open to answer any questions you might have. That might be a better way than, I'm not always that comfortable talking about myself.
Got any good leads?
Any good what?
Any good leads?
So far?
Yeah.
No, not yet.
I heard there's this real good guy named Jared, you know?
Yeah, I heard, but I, you know, I have to go to get him out of Florida.
Maybe if we wait a couple of months, we'll be done there.
And just so the council knows. That is pretty much what I described to Marcia is that we have a city staff that for all intents and purposes is typically on autopilot. For lack of a better term. You know, in city hall, Joyce pretty much handles all the utility billing, handles, you know, payroll. Even a lot of the financial duties she started to take on with the assistance of Laili Nichols, our contract accountant. Laili's done an excellent job cleaning up the books, which you all know. And getting us to a point of having clean audits. And then Matt Baker, our public works director, has really handled water and sewer particularly well. And so what I communicated to Marcia was essentially, from my perspective, what, what the city really needs is just. Someone to keep a few of these public works projects moving forward. And first and foremost, assist the council with buying the right permanent administrator. But certainly any specific questions you have about her background?
Well, I guess I was just gonna ask how you felt about, I mean, yeah, first and foremost, we need to find a permanent. Obviously, that's pretty good. Our big priority, however, I guess, are you gonna be comfortable? We got a lot going on, we have grants we're trying to get and property we're in the middle of buying and. You know, there's some projects going on that we're gonna need support because we help make decisions. I'm not gonna speak for, at all, for myself, you know, I'm not the expert on a lot of this stuff and so. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure you were comfortable that we would be leaning on you to.
Sure.
Make sure that, I mean, help us with those things.
Sure.
That still have to keep moving.
Right, yeah, absolutely. Like I said, as soon, I mean, I'm not familiar at this point with a lot of that, but I'm certainly willing to learn.
Right.
You know, I'm willing to work hard. And, because I want to be what you need too.
Right, oh, I know.
And I think, I never, until Oak Ridge, I didn't really work in a small community. And, you know, small communities, you wear a lot of hats. That was something that I, you know, had to get a little more used to and that would be, that's the case here, I did meet the staff, they're. I mean, my first impression was, is that they're, they're just great.
They are great.
And they wear a lot of hats.
Yes.
You know, everyone wears a lot of hats, so, you know, that, that's something I'm willing to do, but like I said, I really, I. I've, I've had, I've worked in bigger organizations where you have a lot more support, so. Yeah, I, that's one thing I just want, a caveat, and, you know, that I would need to learn.
Oh, absolutely, everybody, you can't step into anything without, you know. I guess I just wanted to make sure you recognize, you know, the level of.
Right.
Activity that's going on that probably won't stop, just, you know, along the way.
Oh, yeah.
It's not all of it.
Absolutely, I mean, you've got your road project, and you've got the, you know, Jerry, and I read the packets, yeah. I should have read it. Read your, you know, your, your, your plans and the different things that's really, you know, it's busy.
Yeah.
Busy here.
Never been this busy.
Which I also think is definitely a plus though for, for recruitment. I mean, to me, you have an ideal situation, it's beautiful. You know, you have a beautiful physical environment. It's a small community, but there are things happening. It's close to Eugene Springfield to access, you know, services and other things that you might not really be able to. But I just think the team has a lot going for it, I think it would be. I think you, I think you would attract.
And you would feel like you could work basically full time or?
I could, and I guess that would be some of the details that would want to work out.
Yeah.
How, you know, how many, but I'm assuming it would be full time.
I sort of assume that.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, and, and one of the things I know that I've started to, to think about, and this is a discussion that you'd want to have with, with your interim. Is that there are certain things that, for instance, Alcog assists with a lot of our planning work. They're at a point to where frankly, our lead planner is probably better suited during the period of an interim. To take on a little bit more of a bigger role. In the sense that right now, like when things come in, I'll review them and if there are questions, I try to handle those before they get to the planner. But our planner has, we've worked with him for well over a year now. And so from my perspective, I would think it'd be worth it to, even if you had to increase the contract a little bit, just while you have an interim. Because every code is different, and so the time that you have to put in to understand the land development code and the municipal code. You're probably better off leaning more on the, the contract planner with Alcog. And that's just, that's just my two cents, but I think when you're gonna have somebody for probably three to six months at most, hopefully. That way, you know, really you get the most value out of an interim. Keep things moving. And a lot of the projects, the good thing is that like our street projects, they're supposed to be wrapped up by the middle of August, believe it or not. And we have a city engineer that's been with us for a while now, he's the project lead on that. It doesn't mean that your administrator wouldn't be involved, but you have people in different positions, especially the contractors. That could certainly help someone like Marcia get up to speed fairly quickly in those areas.
And is there a timeframe for you in terms of how long you'd be willing to do this?
Well, I.
Not that we're going to.
Yeah, no, and I understand that, when Jared first talked to me, he said something about six to twelve months and I gasped. I said, I don't really think I can commit six to twelve months. But then he, then he kind of said, well, maybe it's more like three to six, and I said, well, and you know, you want to get a government, someone in here. So it's not like I would have to fall along like you.
Yeah. I mean, I'm sure we're all.
Two a year, right? Is that what you heard?
No, I didn't hear a year.
Yeah, hopefully three to six and hopefully be able to get someone within that timeframe.
We just want enough time that we can really.
Absolutely.
Be picky.
Absolutely.
You know, because we just come too far to go backwards.
Absolutely, yeah. And like I said, I did work with Alcog when we did the recruitment in Oak Ridge. And I was on a really tight timeframe, yeah, I, I had waited over three months. I didn't, I, I couldn't do beyond that at that point. And so we were really, I mean, we were confident to try to get that through. That's certainly not the case here, you know, I don't have that kind of timeframe. But, and in terms of projects, you know, I, because I have been in a position of managing road maintenance and other parks. I am familiar with kind of the flow of how projects work and how things go and.
Any other people have comments, questions?
You slip when the glass is too low? And, you know, I mentioned to Jared, you know, there, there may be other people out there that may have been interested in this, in this position, I, I don't know. I was approached by Alcog, so I don't know what to say.
And just so you know, not to influence your decision at all, but Marcia was on my list before. Because of mainly the work in Oak Ridge. I heard good things from one of the prior administrators, Howard Schuster that we worked with, Ed Alcog. I believe he actually worked under you at.
Right, yeah, yes, when I was at the county, I was just the, you know, my assistant director.
And so.
And I enjoyed Oak Ridge, I think that the staff in Oak Ridge were, I mean, I, you know, I miss them, I still, unless at all, we send emails. Even though I've only got three months. I hear from the police chief usually on holidays, he's like, hi, how you doing? And I understand that you get police services a minimal now in Oak Ridge too.
Okay, in that case, I have some things, of course.
Sure.
We, we feel good about where we are now. We have certain things that, as a council, like the guiding principles, which we set there, we, we set down as a resolution that we agreed to. That we'll treat each other properly, no ambushing, no, you know, cutting, no, nothing like that. So we're, we're, I think, I, I'm proud of the way the council acts, and I've been proud of the way the council's acted for the last few years. The other way, we've set down objectives and they're listed, you know, it's not just come in and do a good job and if we don't like you, we'll throw you out. No, here's, here's gonna be a list and he was involved with things, or some things that he's, that I think he was gonna be able to carry forward. That if we have someone new, we'll probably have to go with objectives again. But we will have, there is a set list of objectives, I don't know if you've shown to her or not. But anyway, for whoever comes in, we have a strategic plan and that's part of the objective there. So we can see that where we are right now, where we're going, where we're gonna try to be. We have subdivisions going on, we have the Crestview, we have the other for twenty-six lots, so that's in process, which is looking good up there. The other for seventeen, that's just at a development stage, we have the two streets, you know, we're selling property, buying property. So there's a lot of little things that's going on that's gonna help us in the long run and we're, we're proud of that. And then we have the budget to support it all, that's the main thing, that, that we're not, we're not sweating it. Because he's already taken care of it, he's got us all in a great situation. Like he says, we have a small staff, they're very proficient. The waterworks people, public works, they take care of the set, they mow, they keep the cemetery looking good, the parks looking good. Joyce inside, she's been in there forever and she's a good public person. She's a good base for Lowell when people come in and they get to meet her first. Laili, great, I just, you know, they're great people. And so what we're looking for, and yourself, and also follow on, we want someone that's coming in that works well in a small group. You can't have discontent in this smaller group, you know, we can't afford to lose any of these people, they're, they're just way too valuable to us. It, the same way requires daily hands-on of everything, you know, there's no, there, public works of course, that, yes, but. The lady coming through the door complaining about the neighbor's town moving too much, you know, you, you have to figure that out. You know, so there's a lot of, lot of hands-on and listening probably and, which is probably why he works from home now. There was too much listening going on. But anyway. So what we're looking for, you know, and is someone who can take our plan, what we've got, and carry it forward. Because I, I think we feel like that what he's gotten us, has put us in a good place. So what we're looking for is someone that can find funding, you know, do the grants and get these projects done, get us on a process. A road where we want to be able to, like, get where we want to be. And, you know, be sympathetic to the, the residential, the customer needs and stuff like that and understand. And like he said, even if you have questions, we have Alcog to talk to. The other thing is, is that we have a great school, so the school superintendent, the fire marshal, great fire marshal. And this is her husband. And Jared, they're all, they're all fairly young and they all work really well together. We had the snow disaster, they came together, there was no plan, there was nothing else, but they all, they all got together, said, I'll do this, you do that, we'll do this. We, they fed the kids at the fire hall, you know, we had a warning station, we kept the, the Facebook page up all the time, he was updating it all. So, you know, they, it's neither, neither one reports to anybody, but they all interact well. So we need someone to know he works within our staff, but within their, their peers. And like I say, he, he works well with the other city administrators around. I know he's, does very well with Crestwell and a few of the other stations or cities too, so that's a good thing. Like I said, we need a knowledgeable, knowledgeable person, energetic person, because we tuck him when we tried to wear him out, so. And he, he still, he still made it through.
No, he's leaving.
That's all right, but we got everything out of him, if there was. Yeah, so that's, that's the main thing there. You know, we feel good about where we are, who we are, and where we are right now, where we're going. And I think this could be a good time for this community coming up in the next five years. So whoever gets a hold of it, and I know city administrators don't stay as long as him quite often sometimes, but. In the next three to five years, for the next one, there is a game plan to go forward. And so, and we, we all support the game plan, so that's my, that's my soapbox.
That's good.
Yeah, so. And also, we are, in our charter, we're a council, city administrator, city. Which means he's the guy in charge. The council, I don't go over there and tell him anything, I ask him a lot. I've asked him why a lot, but as for directing, I would not do that, I won't do that to yourself. And I wouldn't do it to whoever the final person comes, yeah. Like I say, I do ask a lot of questions, you'll agree with that. And sometimes I ask him two and three times because I, I, I lose my focus, just like in this. But, but anyway, that, we're, we're looking for. You know, we're looking for something special, again, and you know, we, and we, we don't know until after we've received it usually that it is special. I'll be quiet.
So Don, would you say that, obviously looking at the limited timeframe that Marcia's looking at. That picking and choosing among those objectives for her during that time period is important. But having the understanding that, and helping us possibly select a new permanent city administrator. That complying with those objectives for the long run is really what we're looking at. I think we should narrow down that objectives so we can keep our focus on some particular projects and things.
While we've got an interim.
Yeah, yeah.
In fact, I was gonna suggest that.
No, we don't want to widen the scope up so much, so we get to widen down.
I was gonna say, what we should do is look at together with our, and prioritize them. I know they are, but at the same time, while we're in an interim, we want to prioritize those things during the interim, what's the most important.
Keep the process going.
So that we can keep it going, understanding that an interim isn't gonna be able to keep up with the flow.
I, I think, I think probably all of us have a pretty good awareness, I think our objectives that are prioritized right now are pretty apparent and aware.
Well, they are.
You know, the, the land transfer activities we're doing right now, the work in the park, the work in the library, and the work on the roads are the big projects that we've got going in the long run. I think, I think then, and working with them on housing development, I think those are our.
But a lot of those are our.
To-dos right now that we're in the process.
Yeah, and they, they won't stop, just to me.
Yeah.
I'm sure, and Jared in the next couple of weeks is gonna help get, put some of those into motion, so.
And I'm assuming that Marcia's gonna kind of sit side saddle with Jared until you're departing.
Have any time?
Or is this gonna be, Marcia's gonna just get dumped and you're out of here?
So that is, that is one of the challenges.
You do have your phone number, Jared.
Absolutely. So one thing I just want to point out for Marcia, I'm sure she caught this, but. The great thing is that everything that I have told Marcia in the last week or so, you pretty much just summed up for me. So I mean, I think it's great because, you know, frankly now Marcia, you know, you can see that this, this council certainly knows where the city's headed. The role of the council and the staff moving forward, which, like you said, is critically important to getting a good administrator. Because this is really a great, really set up for the long haul now, I think that's.
Some of us have to run again, Jared, right in the middle of that bit.
I, I know.
I think the timing is good that we, you know, closed up our annual report for last year, we're not right before that, you know, we're not.
And the budget's set.
The budget committee has set, that, that we really are in, in a position of working with those in-place activities that are going on. And not possibly some busy work.
Well, and they've already started, they've already, the wheel is spinning.
I think, I think those are the exact five things that I mentioned to Marcia.
Yeah.
So, I mean, from my perspective, that's what I would focus on, of those five things.
And I think the sixth thing being now choosing the permanent city administration, I think that's the, the new paradigm is that that's of utmost importance.
And, and, and we'll talk about an overlap, one of the challenges, because honestly, is that I, I, one of the things in the beginning when I was approached, I said, ugh. I, I'm, I'm out of town from the fourteenth and twenty-ninth, it's been a while. Jared leaves on the twenty-fourth, so there's not much.
Like I said, we have his phone number.
Yeah.
I've started that.
You understand, though?
Secondly, I think what I'm going, what I decided to do and take vacation the last week. But I'm certainly available by phone if anyone needs me. Probably should be just fine.
I, I would assume that you're gonna leave her with a, a good volume of continuity folders related to these projects, or speaking of another.
Joyce and Max are, oh, yeah.
Absolutely, so I've already, I've already started working on that. And then any details were left out, like I mentioned earlier, we've got some great resources. Our planner, both Henry Hurley and Jay Collister, have worked on those subdivisions for several years now. Our engineer, obviously, he's managing those two projects, the two street projects in downtown. You know, you do have the library, but we, you know, we have a conceptual plan together for that. And the hope is we can get the grant application out before I leave, I'm certainly hoping to get that finished. But you still have a pretty good roadmap there, and then you have the property across from city hall.
What happened, sure.
And, and you do, you have, you know, you have Sean that kind of knows the ins and outs of that. And so I think, you know, I'll certainly do what I can and get those details together, but we've certainly got great resources. And we'll make sure that those are all noted as well, moving forward.
Do you have any questions of us?
Not at this point, but I'm sure I will. Depending on, you know, what you decide.
We spent, and we did, we spent probably two hours last week, so we did spend quite a bit of time chatting about the city and where we're at, where we're going. Getting to know the staff. So.
Well, and I've been kind of isolated, so I was telling Jared, I think I was kind of concerned about with COVID, you know. And seeing the office. And seeing the office, and Joyce has Plexiglas, and there's very little, you know, interaction in terms of physical, you know. Spacing and social distancing and
Well, we've been doing our meetings on too.
Oh, yeah.
And we can keep doing that.
Yeah, we also need to learn, but I said that I haven't had a Zoom meeting, yeah.
None of us are Becky. You're really methodless.
We have we have El Cog for that, we have him next, next.
Is he pretty good at that? Okay.
Yeah, he definitely told me, I said, you know, that'll all help.
Good, okay.
Pretty good.
So what do we need to do?
I might try to Zoom even when I'm on vacation.
There you go. So this isn't, this actually isn't set up for any kind of an action, just wanted you to get a chance to to chat with Marcia. It's certainly, if you wanted to take action, you could under other business. If not, I will tell you, there's a good chance that we'll have a meeting next week if you let me. Based on how some of these things go tonight, and so I will leave that up to the council. But certainly during the regular meeting, if if you do want to move forward in some way, let me know and we can start that process.
Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Should I just?
You can you can certainly stay for the meeting. That is entirely up to you. One thing, and I don't know if you mentioned or not, but Marcia does live in Eugene, so she's close by, I don't know if you've heard that, but that's certainly nice when you're looking at an interim as well.
Yeah, and the question we asked about working from home, and I said, well, I think I need to understand what's going on.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I agree, yeah.
Next up is the downtown paving and utility improvement loan, starting on page four.
Okay, so Mayor Bennett and Council, I just wanted to provide you with a copy of the loan application that we submitted to the state for those two street projects. The only thing that was different from the discussions that we've had in the past is I did add five percent for contingency, just in case something comes up. But the rest of it is just as we've discussed. Hoping to have an answer from them in the next week, because they told me it would take they said they should have an answer within two weeks, and then we can move forward with action on that.
Any questions by anybody else? Okay, on page two, I believe it is. Which is on our page five, you have a paragraph there, detailed project description, okay? The last sentence there says conduit will be run on both streets for future broadband upgrades. I don't see that in the description product description or anything like that. It's just that the introductory orange stuff is gonna be laid in there. But or is the city doing that, or are we getting the contractor to do that, or?
So that's in the contract.
Electric conduit?
Yeah, I see that on that, but I didn't see it as a breakout for us having to pay for it on any of the
It's probably not as a separate
Okay, so that
breakout, but it's
So, okay, they understand that they're gonna be doing that, right?
So this is, yeah, this is actually just the loan application.
I understand that, but I didn't see it on the the breakout for the money for the different parts of the job, there was in there, they showed the four inch PVC, I took that to be going across the the street from different because it was only like a hundred and twenty foot and then three hundred and sixty foot, so the streets are like seven hundred and twenty foot. So I wouldn't wasn't sure, is that something that we're gonna be an add on, or are they aware of it, or?
So there are a couple of locations just to get the electrical across the street.
Right, that's that four inch PVC, yeah.
Yes, and so that is that is what what could be used as well, so that's why they're putting in that conduit.
Okay, I took it to be the, in my mind, the conduit would run
North or east and west?
Yeah, east or, yeah, east, west, so it's just crossways, huh?
It's just to have conduit in the ground so that when we get to a point of hopefully undergrounding the power that where those lines are located, that there's a crossing to get across the street.
Okay.
So we don't have to tear the street up again.
Okay, I I I didn't know if they're just gonna put that orange dented in the ground next to the water line for the broadband. But you're saying it's just you want to go across the street?
Yeah, it's it's literally just to have some conduit crossing the street so it doesn't have to get torn up.
All righty, let's see, see if I have anything else. As you can see, I asked a lot of questions. A lot of them have real easy answers. And I did see on page twenty two and twenty three, where it was broken out for the PVC electrical conduit, the four inch, so that's so that was just crossing the street versus going lane flies, okay. Anything else on the downtown paving? Loan, I didn't, let's get let's go down to the long part, that pages add on, that's way on down there. Give us a lot of information. Is that two twenty two, is that the loan, is that what you're?
Just wanted you to have a copy of it.
Okay.
It's a good thing I already got them to sign it. Okay, so what are the questions, Don, we get?
So
On page two twenty two is the loan information. Start where it starts.
Six of the packet?
Two twenty two, which is I think that.
Oh, that's a different, that's a different
But that's a loan for a home?
Yeah.
That's a loan for a home.
I'm like, this isn't looking right.
Okay, okay, that's a, okay, that's for the financing, the, okay.
All the way to the end.
Okay, so we're, are we through with the downtown paving?
Yes, sir, unless there are any questions.
Okay, I covered all my I dotted all my i's and crossed my t's. Next up is the ODOT code assistant, whatever, that's page one eighty five.
Yeah, so Mayor and Council, this is the agreement that was negotiated with the Oregon Department of Transportation for the code assistance grant. It's the total, this is a little different than most grants, and that ODOT actually pays for these services directly, we will not receive any funds from ODOT. But the total award amount is estimated at fifty seven thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. And so essentially, ODOT is funding the project, El Cog will actually manage the update itself, you have the scope of work included in here, which is I didn't see any significant changes from the last time we reviewed this, I know it was quite some time ago. The reason it didn't come back to you was because, frankly, I think because of COVID, they were working on other on other things. But essentially, the purpose of this project is to take the downtown master plan, the policies and goals, and to actually make sure that they're reflected in our land development code. So we have provisions that support the downtown master plan. I would point you to, let me see if I can find the page now in the scope of work, because I think that's the most important piece. Let's see. Let me get through all of the legalese down to the scope of work. Okay.
On one ninety four.
So page one ninety eight of the packet, of the work session packet list all the objectives, so number one is implementing the downtown master plan, so zoning map updates, building standards, adopting street section standards for our downtown area. Site plan review criteria, so for example, some criteria when for any commercial structure, those go to site plan review. And so having some standards in place so that the planning commission can follow them and ensure that those goals of the downtown master planner are followed. Evaluating lot sizes, creating mixed use development standards, development standards for middle housing types, so accessory dwelling units is a big one. We, every year, we get more and more requests for them. So that's something that will be reviewed and there'll be some language included for that.
Many hall.
Yeah, so, you know, the old term is the mother-in-law suite. I know, that's that's probably not. Mending language for, I need to some of the less interesting but very important code provisions. Mending language for access and driveway standards. So, for example, our code right now says you have to have an apron. There are no specifications whatsoever for that, and so it's kind of been left to the interpretation of our our planners. Adding or revising deficits for half-streets, development of property structure, clarifying setbacks in all dwelling districts, flag lot requirements, and then there are some other housekeeping items here as well. And so this is the scope of work that we've negotiated with ODOT. From our planner's perspective, I know this is quite a bit, so we're pretty lucky that we've been able to get this much in there. This is essentially the housekeeping, the downtown master plan and the housekeeping list that we've been keeping for the last few years of things that need to be updated. And so it's great that the state is going to help us out with this so that we can have a much clearer code moving forward. Are there any questions on this?
You said fifty seven thousand, is there a copay on that, or is that the whole amount?
That is, that is everything.
Okay.
So we have not proposed any maps for this project there. There are some tasks included in here that the city's responsible for, but that's essentially putting together a steering committee like we did with our master plans, and then posting agendas and taking care of minutes, so. Kind of household pass, housekeeping pass.
So we're kind of at the end of the tunnel on this one, so just putting it into action.
Yes, sir. There's quite a bit of public involvement, and so that will be a challenge, you know, we may start with a plan and it may have to evolve in order to actually get the project done. Some of it may have to be virtual, and that's that is one change that's in here from the last time that this was presented. Because they want to make sure that once we get started, that we're able to complete it, and we don't have to stop it midway through.
Any questions on the ODOT code changes? If not, we'll go to surplus property on Highland, page two twelve.
So Mayor Bennett and Council, just wanted to provide you a little information on the lots that the council has requested to surplus. So for folks that aren't aware of the all about catty corner from this lot here on the other side of Highland. There's a lot kind of between Highland, North Shore and Wetlow that the city owns. It's technically over a half an acre, but there isn't that much property that can be developed. In fact, one of the things that will need to be done before the property is sold is either an easement put in place over the creek or right of way. The creek runs actually north of First Street, and there is right of way that's dedicated from First Street all the way down to Wetlow. And so if you look at the property, basically, everything that's overgrown is essentially in the creek bed, in the stream bed. And so there will be some expense to have the engineer either put together an easement, a permanent easement or right of way, and it probably makes sense to to have it recorded as right of way, just to be just to be consistent. But there is a little work there that would need to be done. I did discuss, you've got a picture of it there as well, I did discuss it with our city attorney just on the procurement end, just to see the best way to actually surplus it. And so one of the options, you've got a couple of options. One is just to have a sealed bid, another is you can or actually, I'm actually allowed to to appoint a a realtor to assist in those negotiations. And so I would leave that for the council to discuss. Make sure I don't. But that's all I have on that item.
Is there enough space there for two homes?
You know, it would, because of the drainage, I think it would be a little challenging, you could have potentially it may need a conditional use permit, but you could potentially put like two townhomes, so like something in there. No, yeah, it's not zoned for business, it's zoned residential, but you probably could get somebody probably could get a conditional use permit to put, say, two townhomes on there. I think if the council does have an interest in doing something. Let me take a step back, so I think one of the things you would want to do is regardless of if it's sealed bid or if it's with a realtor, I do think you should have some agreement where whoever's purchasing the property agrees to file a billing permit within, say, six months or a year. And the reason to do that is because that way you're ensuring that it gets developed, and you don't just have somebody buying it just to hold it for twenty years. I think with all the activity we have in that area, you probably want to ensure that that somebody buys it and really whoever buys it has an intention to build it on.
But with all the wetlands, there's adequate land to build a house and everything around it, so that wouldn't be a problem?
Yes, but I do think it would be, like I said, I do think it would be prudent to actually have the the engineer go ahead and break that off as right of way, that way it's clear to somebody buying it. How many properties they actually have to work with.
If it's right of way, does the city or does the new owner have to keep the, you know, the brush and everything come back?
So where our code is written with, for example, the street right of way, it is the property adjacent property that's responsible, I think because of the size of that, it would probably end up being the city's responsibility. We have one other drainage way in town that the city has basically taken the responsibility of that. Because they are city property. But we would certainly clarify that, so that's a good question.
Would we again, would we be to mow that thing annually and stuff like that, or like I said, right away, so there'd be a way to get in there, cut it, or? Now, you said what have you been done for it? Now, you said it's overgrown.
Not, not that we haven't done anything for that.
So a new, new buyer, they should say you need to, or buyer.
I think a clarification on that. I don't think, I don't think you're in the same situation as you were with some of the other developments in town whereby any, the city actually accepted funding to maintain, for instance, the sun ridge development. And so there's an actual contractual obligation to provide that. So this is a little, little different, I think.
Well, we could write that in there as it's back there, that's yours. But don't do anything with it.
Technically, when it comes to, when it comes to stormwater, we actually have quite a bit of responsibility in ensuring that the stormwater quality is maintained. And so, that being said, we have quite a few small creeks in our community, and so it is, it is a large task and it's just an area where we do what we can with the resources that we have.
Find out. We just come back with this or we can decide on. Any other questions on the lot back there?
We haven't discussed any, what that would be worth.
I'm assuming this is a rough draft, because otherwise the property lines are actually the other to this house.
So these, this is quite common, but the property lines that you'll see online are commonly off five to ten feet.
I'm guessing, I'm guessing the true property line, you buy that a little bit taller brush or see if it adds to the brown of the yard.
Yeah, there's actually a fence. It's actually got a fence on parting, so that's likely that would be the property.
Yeah, I see the fence now, yeah.
On the more individual property.
But that looks like a very nice property. Except for what you can't use.
Which is about half of it.
Yeah.
To be put on.
It should be half of it.
Especially if you didn't have to mow it then.
You, you don't have to worry about your back neighbor pestering you. You got
That's right.
All kinds of space there.
You should write the ad gone.
And the city in front of you, so what more, what more could you want?
It's probably though, the, the property, the question was about the value of the property. The lots in that area have been selling for around fifty thousand, so that's likely in that neighborhood.
Okay, now we're up to the financing for two oh five and two ninety-eight East Main, which is where I get confused because it's too early.
Yeah, so Mayor Bennett and council. So these are a few options that we had, had put together. The two oh five and two ninety-eight East Main would not be tax exempt. And so the rate is slightly higher than what it would be if it was tax exempt. The percent, yeah, yeah, the percentage rate. And so the reason for that is because of the house, of the property. And so there's an assumption that we would continue to rent that out until it's sold. And so that's kind of viewed as a business activity, which then compromises the tax exempt status. There are a few options that we've received, and these are, I think you can tell, they're pretty informal. So I think if we get some direction tonight, we can take a track and move forward if you like. One is, let's see. The first one is Banner Bank, which is a fifteen or a twenty-year amortization, about three point seven five percent on, I think they quoted three hundred and ten thousand dollars. The actual property given is for two hundred and ninety-eight thousand. But that's going to get you into the twenty-two to twenty-six thousand dollars a year range on that, on that note. There are also some expenses that would be involved with going this route. So Banner Bank requires three thousand for the bank's legal expenses, plus the city would have an additional three to four thousand dollars as well for our own legal expenses for this. So there are some costs associated with, with that option. The next option.
Next could be two twenty-seven.
So, yeah, I was on two twenty-three and now we're going to two twenty-seven. Government Capital has another option here. This is a fifteen-year amortization. You can see the, the payments. It's almost twenty-seven thousand a year, the first payments a year from signing. And then the last one was from Summit Bank. Their suggestion was a they can do something similar to Banner Bank, but it looked like their best option was frankly a, a twenty-four month, it was only long. If that was the option selected, you would be looking at a payment of rent of all the thirteen thousand a year for two years. And then if the city still owned the property, you'd have to refinance it. That may not be such a, there's some, some risk there that may not be such a bad option though, because I don't think there is an interest in holding the property long-term. And your rent would essentially cover most of that expense.
What do we have to do? Don't we have to do some work on making it one lot? Turning it into one lot?
With the county.
With the county, or something?
So the, the challenge that I think that we would run into with anyone wanting to buy that property is just the right-of-way. There's a significant amount of right-of-way, and I wish I had that in front of me, but it's, it's like a hundred and twenty feet, maybe more than that. And it's considerably wider than even the right-of-way for, for North Shore from Pioneer Mall. So it's wider than that.
So that's fifty-five feet off center line then, basically what you're saying?
Yeah, and so, I'm gonna just pull up here.
Well, in the picture of the smaller property, it's, it's on there, so right where the line is, it probably is more accurate than the other property. Is that what you're saying? So on, yeah, the map on page two fifteen.
Oh, I see, okay. Yeah, so you can kind of see it there on two fifteen. Thank you. So you can see it's off-center on West Boundary Road.
I see what you're saying.
It's off-center, but if you can look just to the west, you can see that it's quite a bit narrower for the next block on North Shore Drive. And so, one of the challenges in trying to, to sell both of these lots to, to anyone is, is the process for having that right-of-way reduced.
Can we do that before we finish, right?
Yes. And so that would be.
That would be an idea, right? Yeah.
And it's a big package.
It looks more desirable, and that's why they, that those folks don't want to buy. So it's not that we're enjoying properties, we gotta figure out that right-of-way.
Yeah, and so we've already started that, we've already started that process, so I have the form from the county to go through the process.
So this is all we'd be selling.
They've already looked up some of the history on it, and I'm sure you know of living here, that the reason why it's so wide, the reason why it's so wide is that the road.
It's inside that box there.
Whatever reason they did not.
The other parts they can't use.
There. Well, that's where.
Well, that's the, I think, where we're.
Give up that right-of-way.
Yes, and so
See the distance on.
The challenge from a developer's standpoint is to, to spend the money on those two lots. First of all, to be able to acquire both lots, because there's considerably less value if you're only able to secure one of them. And the other piece is having the right-of-way reduced. And then even beyond that, you know, one of the projects in the downtown plan was coming up with the streetscape. And so obviously, it's difficult to say, how much do you reduce the right-of-way without knowing what the street section is going to look like? So your, your actual lane width, your sidewalk, if you're going to have any kind of a landscape buffer between the curb and the sidewalk. And so from a developer's standpoint, not having those things resolved creates some risk. Especially since, you know, there is a, there is a house on the property and likely, in all likelihood, whoever buys it is going to demolish the house, but to the person selling the house, there's still, there's still value there. And so there's
So I guess my, my question is, can we get that resolved in two years, or less than two years, so, you know?
At least for the process.
Long, but we can, yeah, with it, with it.
From, from the discussions that, that we've had with the county, it's probably going to be, it's probably going to be a six-month process.
Okay.
And we've already had.
Start that tomorrow?
What's, is that?
And you're gonna start that tomorrow?
Oh, sure, absolutely. So we, we already did, we, just so you know though, I mean, we already, you know, a week or two ago, had a conference call with one of the county engineers, planner, our engineer, myself, and Matt. And so we've already started to have these discussions with them. We've discussed the downtown master plan with them a couple of times, and so they're pretty familiar now with what we'd like to see happen there, including the, the roundabout. And so there's still, I think, we got a pretty positive reception with the roundabout concept on our last meeting. And so it, it looks like they're going to see what they can do with the safe routes to school permit, to get that done as well. And so it seems, I guess, just to sum up, sum things up, it seems like there is some bias that we're starting to get from the county on this. And again, I think for an individual developer, you're in a different position than the city. And so I think there's some value that we can provide there. But that's not, as we've discussed before, that there's not, there's no risk involved. But it's a project that we could certainly help move forward if the council would like.
Is there any chance of adjudicating that sharp angler, high-degree cut in the orange dazwa?
So that's a good question. One of the challenges with that is, as it's currently laid out is that really dark ground area there, there's actually a storm grain, which would need to be removed. And so that would, I'm sure, could come up with the county. And then the one thing that I actually cannot answer offhand.
There used to be a road that actually went to the left of that, so to the east of that brown, right there, there used to be a road that cut through there. And I mean, that, that storm system that they put in there is significant. I mean, it was, it was a monumental thing when they installed it there. But I think if you just, if we were able to just cut the corner to corner and get rid of that triangle that's there and not get down into the storm grain section, I believe that, that does not have any infrastructure underneath that section. I believe the infrastructure is through here.
And another piece of that would be, it would, part of that might be depend, might depend on the plan that whoever has for the property. If that's just in a landscaped area, it's not a big deal.
Yeah.
So it just depends on what they would need to use it for. But e- even with that, the way that it is, I think that right-of-way could still be reduced somewhat, because it's, it's.
I, I just see if we could, if we could, you know, square up that as much as possible, it allows future development of building in that area versus going, okay, you're, you're screwed past this line right here to do out a building. You know, you can't build in that little triangle, you can't build in that little, that little leg that sticks out right there.
For sure.
So.
Well.
I'm actually surprised to see the shape of this compared to what used to be there.
Oh, the, because that's where the store.
So you could actually see the old road. That line that you see going through there is where the road used to cut through before they readjusted Highland and, and West Boundary and North Shore right there. West Boundary Main, sorry. It used to, there was always a triangle down there where that ground section is at, that was always a triangle, but there was a road, you can kind of see the line of that road still. And the store really sat, in, in my opinion, I believe if you look, the store actually sat off the property.
Did it, do you think it was up by that?
It, 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 its footprint was pretty much right there. It was a pretty large building.
It was. Oh, man.
Had a basement too. That's all filled in. There was a basement there.
Okay, I'm gonna say it out loud. There used to be tanks in there.
I'm not positive about there. Might have been some fuel oils and heating oil tanks in there, but I don't think it was ever a service station or anything like that to where it is. They were, they were just in the basement. So they weren't, similar to.
That has to have been known.
Yes.
Through the skin, um, wouldn't carry water.
Oh, good. Okay, then it was. I just had somebody mention to me that they didn't think they ever took them out, but good. So what's our risk on doing the two years? I mean, what's the worst-case scenario? We have to refinance?
Worst-case scenario is, is something happens in two years with the economy interest rates are higher.
That's true.
So that's, that's your biggest risk. You know, hate to say this out loud, but typically when you're in a period to where you're in a potential recession, typically your interest rates are lower because there is a a push to stimulate the economy, so that you would hope that in two years, if the city still owned it, the rates would still be pretty low, but there's always a risk that rates could increase. One of the nice things is that if we're able to sell the other lot, that could, not that they're directly related to each other, but that could cover those payments for a few years.
I see on some of these, they, no payment for one year, so it'd just be the five thousand dollars loan, administration fee, and then no payment for a year? If, if we, and all of these, do we, is there a prepayment penalty for getting out of the loan or anything like that? That they're gonna want some sort of money or money back or something like that, or to make so many payments, or?
Mayor, so that was, that was one of the challenges with, with getting a loan for this property, because as you recall, when we did the loan for the house and the property we bought adjacent to Rolling Rock Park, those two, I believe our call date is out like seven years, so we have to make payments for these seven years. We can't just pay it off. And so with these, there is no prepayment penalty. I made that very clear with all three of them, which kind of adds a wrinkle in, in into the financing. As far as the payment date, that's fairly common, particularly your payment's out six months to a year.
So on the one for a year, if we got rid of the property in nine months, they'd just pro-rate the amount and say, yo, it's nine months of this? Or what would be the?
Well, we'd sell it, so we'd pay it. We'd just pay the whole thing.
It would, the whole thing would have to be paid off.
Of the whole loan, okay.
Correct.
Which is the idea anyway.
And your, your interest then should be just through that, that date.
Okay, okay. That's true. That makes sense. Any other questions on that property? Not seen any, not hearing any.
Oh, are we looking at making decisions on it?
In the next session.
I'm in the next session.
You certainly could, because of where we're at, however, it would be more or less providing direction to me to pursue a certain route. I, I would say if, and I'll say this in the regular session as well, if the council is interested in the, essentially what I've always referred to as temporary financing, I would just go ahead and get several quotes on that and then bring that back to the council at the next meeting, which is one of the reasons why I said you may want to have a meeting next week, just to get this stuff moving.
Yeah, we got a lot going on and with you stepping out, we want to make sure that we have as many of our ducks in a row as possible. Any other questions before we adjourn the work session? Okay, we're adjourned at eight ten.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you for coming, Marcia. It was good to meet you. Very good. Very good.
Okay, next up is the special meeting. Anybody need a few seconds or ready to roll? Okay. Okay, we called to order the Lowell City Council work session for July seventh at eight eleven. Roll call, please.
Just for clarification real quick, so this is the special meeting?
Special meeting.
Yes, just for the record.
Yep, yep, yep.
Uh, Mayor Bennett?
Here.
Counselor Myers, here. Counselor Harris?
Here.
Counselor Stratus?
Present.
Counselor Drot?
Here.
Who stands for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the people of our land, to stand one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What do you get a Hall of American flag for?
Any, uh, changes to the agenda that anybody sees? We have an executive session during it and then coming out of it, there will be a lot of actions. Not hearing any public comments?
Oh, sure.
My name's Paul Regan, I'm at sixty-two East Third. First off, I want to say to our city administrator, this is a hell of a way to get out of a housewarming get-together. Here, here, yeah.
Yeah, darn.
Damn it. But having said that, um, having said that, I, I do, I'm sad to see you go, but I wish you the best of luck. And for the council, I just want you all to know that this is a real strong group. And that I have a lot of faith in you guys selecting a good city administrator. Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your vote.
Thank you for your participation and I leave it.
Yeah.
Any council comments at this time?
We do have some folks on the following meeting as well. And so if there is anyone that would like to give a comment, please feel free to speak up. So not seeing any.
Not hearing any, glad you're on board with us. Okay, first item up is nothing to do with old business, first item up is new business. Agreement for ODOT code assistance. Mr. Cobb, you want to go over that?
Yes, so Mayor Bennett and counsel, just briefly, since we discussed this in our work session. But the Oregon Department of Transportation has provided a grant agreement for the council's review. And so the scope of work includes the, actually, updating our code to reflect the downtown master plan, goals and policies, as well as some other housekeeping items. And so there is a list of, of items that will be included in this update of the code. There will be quite a few opportunities for public participation, obviously, with things and the way they've required the last few months. They may not necessarily be in person, but there will be opportunities for engagement through the city website, as well as some virtual meetings potentially, if necessary. This is not your traditional grant in that the city will not receive any funds directly. It will be paid directly out of, from ODOT to the consultants, which is South Fog and the Land Council of Governments. We also serve as our city planners, who they're very familiar with, with our code. The estimated award is fifty cent a thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. And so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Anybody have questions? We have a timetable or feeling for the, the funding time it's gonna take for that and the completion of work? Or is it, do they get, just gonna get the word, they got the funding coming, they start to work and then they get paid, or?
So they will get, I don't recall precisely when they get paid. They've done a few of these projects in the past, so they're familiar with that process. The actual schedule, which has obviously been pushed back a little bit, is in the scope of work. And I'm just seeing if I can pull that up here. Much like some of our other planning processes, I wouldn't say it's like a six to nine month process.
Okay.
There's quite a bit to it, but again, the goal of, of the city as well as ODOT and Department of Land Council has built in this picture that we have plans that are sustainable, so we're not revising them again in two or three years. And so there is quite a bit of public engagement through the process, through a steering committee, as well as some workshops.
So you, we have the application and then they'll start to work and then they work the funding out by monks themselves? And that's six to nine months sounds probably pretty good for all the little things and the things they're gonna get into.
So what are the actions?
So the, we've got a few courses of action, but essentially it's a motion to approve the agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation and authorizing the city administrator to sign the agreement.
That's written.
Correct.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation, authorizing the city administrator to sign the agreement as written.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation and authorizing city administrators to sign the agreement as written. Do we have questions or further discussion? Not seeing any or hearing any? All those in favor of motion to approve the agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation, authorizing the city administrator to sign the agreement as written? Sigil five is saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. That's good. Okay, surplus of eight North Highland Main. Mr. Cobb?
So Mayor and counsel, let me see if I've got this. Oh, so that actually only ends up at the bottom, so why is it confused? So that's item number four, if you've got your bookmarks out. Page.
Forty-seven, forty-five, or forty-three, forty-three looks like. Yeah, it looks like forty-three at work.
It's forty-three.
Okay. So as Mayor and counsel, as you know, you did direct staff to prepare for the surplus, eight North Highland Lane. So that's essentially a piece of city property that's between Highland, West Boundary Road and Wetlow. So there's almost, there's a little over a half of an acre there. However, much of that property cannot be developed because of wetlands and a creek that runs through it, the stormwater creek. And so if we discussed earlier in the work session, city staff would need to work with the engineer to separate that property that cannot be developed and would need to be maintained for stormwater purposes. And so we would need to move forward on that before the property is sold. As far as options for selling the property, there are a number of options. You could sell it by sealed bid, you could have a fixed price sale. So basically you have someone like a Realtor, look at other lots in town and see how, see what they sold for, put together a price and sell it like you would selling the other lot in town. Those are the two primary options that I would suggest. With either one, I would need to work with the attorney on this, but I would recommend having some requirement that a building permit is pulled within some period of time.
And that could be either one, you could.
Yeah, I think we could, we could, we could do that with either one. I'd want to make sure that the attorney reviews that and puts that together for us. Because I think really the whole concept with this whole area is that we would like to see things get moving. We don't want to see somebody just buy a property and sit on it for twenty years. Uh, because we really need housing right now. I don't know, the last time I looked at, like at Zillow or Realtor, I think there might have been one house listed in town. So there's definitely a need for more housing and whatever the city, city council can do to facilitate that, I think, probably the better.
So, so the verbiage in the courses of action right now does not include a caveat for, you know, enacting a, a building permit or a building act within six months or a year? How do we, do we need to modify another course of action representing that verbiage in it?
And should we choose which version, six months or a year?
So I think that was the discussion that I wanted to have with the council is, first of all, is that, is that something you would like to see included? And then second of all, what are your thoughts on that, six months or a year?
I, I think a period more appropriate to two years is more appropriate to get, I mean, you know, people are tanning this, I mean, forcing somebody's hand too quickly with their process that's in place to enact, you know, building.
And if we don't have our.
Six months is a pretty short window. You know, I, I feel this property is set empty for, you know, since the city was founded. To say, hey, you know, we want something within six months or a year is pretty heavy-handed. That a more gentle hand to say, hey, we'll give you two years, but we do want to develop, allows people options and to, to work with this. And I, I think also you probably have something in here about reselling the property in that two years. That, 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 you know, caveat that's carried through to the next purchase. Because what happens if somebody purchases this and then they did something, you know, for some reason?
So can we just extend the two years or the two years?
No.
No.
I think that has to carry through in case there's some other real estate action with the purchasers before the window closes.
So I, I think the best thing to do probably at this point is, I'm pretty sure we'll need to have a meeting next week. And so now knowing this, I think I'll take this to the city attorney and we can write something up if that is.
How do you guys feel about two years versus six months?
I don't think it can be less than a year at, at all, because if our coding force, if our, if our planning is not hard on paper in six months, then how, I mean, we want to make sure we have some backing.
So you could, I can tell you right now that you should have no issue selling a lot in town. As long as everything is clear and they clean up the right of way piece, there's no reason why somebody could not have a building permit done in a year. Submit it, doesn't mean the house will be built by then, but there's no reason they couldn't. In fact, since the council, since the council made the motion a few weeks ago, I've already had one person ask about us selling that lot. The building on it.
That white hole is here tonight?
What's that? No, that's not Hall. No, he's like, I'm done, no. And so there's certainly, there's certainly interest in it. A year or two year, you should not have any issue with it. And it sounds like what I'm hearing is whether it's a year or two, having something in there that obviously if the next person buys it, you know, if they're down to the last three months, well, then they, they probably need to get moving with some plans.
So what, what, what do we, what is the outcome if they, if they defy the, the two-year window?
Yeah, so you'd have to have some sort of clawback restriction, some sort of clawback provision in the agreement.
So.
So either.
Five thousand dollars a month.
It's either a financial penalty, or they give it back, or however. And I would certainly lean on the attorney for some of that language. You'd want to have some teeth in it.
I agree, I agree, I mean, just to have that, you know, a non-forced applause is, is, you know.
And I think we should go with the having a Realtor. Yes, I agree. But I like the one year, I like the one year with the first permit and then that.
One year to get a permit.
Well, hold the permit, just to start.
One year to apply.
Yeah, to apply, that way, I mean, it sounds like there's interest already. That way they don't have to have the house built in a year.
Right.
They just have to pull the permit by that.
Yeah, they have to, they have to give the city a, you know, a request for that. The, I think one year is adequate. You know, you're talking two years, that's almost sounds like somebody that's buying it, it's gonna hold it for a year, a year and a half, and turn, try to turn it and sell it for another five, ten thousand dollars, whatever. If, if they know that they only have a year to do something with, nobody's gonna try to, in nine months, try to sell it again.
I think this property is about topped out for its value. I, I don't see a, any increase of it. I mean, if you look at the, the two thousand eight, the housing market bottomed out, this property is valued at five grand. I mean, you're talking, you're talking ten times the amount of that at this, at this very moment, it's not going to climb in that.
Now, you're looking at the property cost.
Nobody's gonna make any more money off this property than we do in any substantial amount. And as a matter of fact, there's a high, there's a heavy risk in purchasing this property if all you're looking to do is kind of do that.
No property is five thousand dollars in this town anymore.
No, that was in two thousand eight.
He just meant that it's only gone up that much.
Fifty is a, probably a good, in that range is a good number. And if, and like, we want, the people that's coming out here that's gonna buy that, who's gonna want to buy the house out of it?
I would hope so.
You'd, you'd hope it was not to sit there and hold it and.
It's not, it's not an investment.
I, I think a year, I think, I agree with Sam, I think that's a, a good adequate time to, they should be able to submit a.
And, and really our goal is just to make sure they really do build on it, right? It's not, and that's punitive and, I think, in years and.
And the other part about a Realtor, if Sean's agreeable to it, I think it'd be a great thing. If the city administrator was staying, I would be kind of, eh, I don't know which one it is. But since, since, no, since he's leaving, we're gonna have to hand this thing closed bid after it's been worked through to get it, whatever done with the easements and everything done and then try to do it in a closed bid. Let's, let's, if he'd be willing to do it, I think it'd be appropriate.
And to be, to be clear too, just, just so that folks understand, so it would just be at cost. So not, no, no commission involved, just so that that's out there.
We appreciate that.
Jared, you can take those things to the attorney for that next week and add it to the motion.
Yeah, so I can have that cleared out.
Of eight North Highland, yeah, with the.
We will try to get that, I'll, I'll see.
Sean Watson.
Worst case scenario, we'll bring it back to the regular meeting, but I'd hope to get it next week. Um, just to continue to move it forward, but, yeah. And as far as the year, that's something that can be changed at the next meeting. So whether it's a year or two year, we can, we can put the draft at a year, but you can certainly change that.
So I'm getting the feeling there's no motion right now to be made, we're gonna do it next week. Okay.
You could make a motion, just, just for the record, just to table for our next meeting.
Okay, I'll make a motion, we table it to our next meeting. One second. I don't know if they take the vote, but they probably take the request to table.
Oh, you can vote on it.
Okay.
Go ahead, we're having someone come.
Okay, all those in favor of tabling a motion to approve the sale of eight North Highland Lane? Sigil five are saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's tabled. Okay, financing, two oh five, two ninety-eight East Main Street. Mr. Cobb?
Okay, Mayor Bennett and counsel, as we discussed in the work session earlier, we, we do have an agreement in place for two oh five and two ninety-eight East Main Street. That was done at the meeting on June twenty-third. Staff has solicited some quotes for financing from Banner Bank Summit Bank, as well as government capital. Depending on the financing tool used, the payment would be between thirteen thousand and twenty-six thousand a year. And those costs would be partially offset by any rent from the home there at two ninety-eight East Main Street, as well as, I believe, the council intent for selling the property that's at a corner, was to hopefully offset some of this cost as well. With that being said, you've got a few quotes here. You have two that are essentially for a fifteen or a twenty-year amortization with rates between three point seven five and four percent. For those loans, your payment is going to be the twenty-five thousand to twenty-seven. For those loans, your payment is going to be the twenty-five thousand to twenty-seven thousand a year, in that range. The other option came from Summit Bank, which was essentially a temporary note, an interest-only loan for twenty-four months. And that rate was, let's see. That rate would, would be in the four, let's see, four and a half percent range. I would say if, if the, if the council wanted to, to go with the interest-only loan, I would want to get some more quotes on that, and then we could take action on that at the, either meeting next week or the following week.
So in that case, I mean, all it is, is to solicit additional quotes in pursuit of twenty-four-month interest loan. If we decide that the quotes that we get back are not quite the best option yet, we could still re-pursue the motion to pursue a fifteen-year amortization.
Absolutely.
At least we'll come back with some numbers, so we know what we're looking at.
And they should
I, I think that's a good option to look at.
Yeah, I do too. And so if I, the interest is, there's any lower rates out there, I don't know. When it's interest-only, I guess, that may not be at all.
And the primary reason just for, for doing that is just so that we have, for procurement purposes, have free quotes. I think they're all going to be in that same ballpark. But I think it's just prudent, just to make sure that we get a few others. When the rate is that low and it's an interest-only loan, the actual difference in cost will be pretty minimal. But still prudent, I think, to do that. I think we've got the time to do it.
If we get to the point where the rent pays for the entire two-year period, we are able to, you know, negotiate a deal with the purchaser to go forward with the plan that we like, that fits better with the city's, you know, man, master plan. And we're able to, to access the Aitnworth Island property. I think it's a win all the way around. We, we end up probably putting money in the city coffers in the long run, and we end up with a better utilization of property in that, in this category. So.
I think that's what we're all interested in.
And, and there's certainly, as we discussed this before, I mean, there's, there's always going to be some risk involved with something like this. But I think, like you stated, Council's grasp, I mean, the, the goal is to try to have that property conform to the downtown master plan and to, to not have to vacant property in the downtown, I think is the biggest goal. Vacant and non-conforming property.
And, and we'd win on Aitnworth Island as well. Right, we fill in a blank over there.
So then we need to table this one?
No, I think we make a motion to solicit additional quotes in pursuit of twenty-four-month interest loan.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
That's a motion, we got a second. Further discussion? All those in favor of motion to solicit additional quotes in pursuit of twenty-four-month interest-only loan? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Tim. Okay, next thing up, there's an executive session. Executive sessions are closed to the public. We will
Thank you, Hal.
Be recessing and coming back in in probably thirty minutes to make any decisions. Thank you, Sean.
Sean, assuming we turn camera as well, could we turn the camera off?
I'm sorry?
Did Garrett turn the camera off?
Yeah, he has to do that.
Do you have to adjourn this one?
No, we want to go recess this one or close it. I'm thinking of which word I think of. And then we'll restart it. Reconvene it.
There you go.
I knew that word was in there.
Okay, go on just one second.
Okay.
I still have to create this breakout room.
Okay, the
Or not. How the heck do I do that?
We're closing the special session at eight thirty-six.
Are we not being recorded now?
No, you are. I've got to figure it out.
But I have, I have to say the right words.
I can't put, since technically there's only one person in the meeting, doesn't include me. Because we started the meeting, so there's really no way
Because we're not really in a Zoom meeting right now.
Well, we are. Just
None of us are there, so.
I only have, heck.
Do you want one of us to go into the Zoom meeting and be in both, so you can groom us?
So we throw a blanket over that thing or?
Never mind. I think he heard me and he dropped out. So that takes care of that. Thanks, Neil.
Yeah, just making sure.
Okay. All right.
Have you stopped recording?
Well, I always record the meeting, I just don't include it.
Is there a break there or?
So, yes, yeah.
Are we able to talk executive business now?
Yes, we can. We can. So the first one is
Wait a minute, let me do my thing. I'm good at it.
Your thing is actually, technically is the break. In the meeting, good.
Called to order the Lowell City Council on the executive session for Tuesday, July seventh at eight thirty-seven. The executive session will be called in accordance to O R S one ninety-two, six sixty-two A to consider the employment of public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent. And two is O R one ninety-two, six sixty-two E to conduct the liberation with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions. Mr. Cobb?
Fine.
Okay, did we reconvene the regular session at nine twenty also? Or the special session, sorry.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, let's hear the motion.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mayor and Council President to go negotiate a contract with Marsha Miller to be interim city administrator for the city of Lowell.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You have his motion?
Yes, sir.
We needed to make a motion to
All those who have any further discussion or questions? All those in favor of the motions, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I go twice on that one?
Aye again.
Do we have any other motions to consider tonight?
Mayor, just one minute, I'm just checking
Aye.
The, let's see if we do have something.
We just passed about needing to do a motion to approve Sean to help with the property.
So that is not the original actions that the council took, and so I advise that, that the city council to add that for, actually for two oh five East Main Street, for two ninety-five East Main Street, and Aitnworth Island. Okay.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve Sean Watson to approve the Real Estate Transaction involving two oh five East Main Street, two ninety-five East Main Street, and eight, eight North Island Street in Lowell.
And just for clarification, so that was to approve and negotiate the real estate transaction? I would, I would, if you wouldn't mind lending that to
I'd like to negotiate and facilitate.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'd like to re-adjourn my motion to approve on Watson to negotiate and facilitate the real estate transactions for the city of Lowell involving two oh five East Main Street, two ninety-five East Main Street, and Aitnworth Island Street in Lowell.
I'll second it.
We have further discussion? Do you have that?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve Sean Watson to negotiate and facilitate the real estate transaction for two oh five East Main, two ninety East Main, and eight North Island. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Terry, thank you, Sean. Pleasure doing business.
Sean, you're going to be here. You're literally
Good.
It depends on you.
You actually, you may want to say that I worked with the city administrator during those things.
So the council already designated the administrator.
That's why you
Don't mess up the box as well.
That probably would have been a good, good amendment.
Probably want to work together, but
Yes, and so, and so that's
So I'd like to make a motion to add the verbiage to our last motion for Sean Watson to be approved to facilitate and negotiate real estate transactions for two oh five East Main Street, two ninety-five East Main Street, and eight North Island Street in coordination with the city administrator or interim city administrator for the city of Lowell.
I second that motion. That's good, Tim.
All of the favors say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys. I can't remember all that.
We just aye'd it.
All those in favor of an amendment to augment the first one to include the, that Sean Watson works with the city administrator, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Okay, the full motion now, all those in favor of the Sean Watson negotiating, facilitating the real estate transaction in coordination with the city administrator for the two oh five, two ninety-five East Main, and eight North Island, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Got it. You guys, maybe you worked it illegal.
Well, we're all burned yet, we've been breathing out.
All righty. Tomorrow night, I get to go and listen, or don't go, go, I get to be online, listen to the Safe Route School for Lowell and Jux, Jux City? I think Jux City. So that, I thought we were already there with it, but like, any other things like the street we were doing, there's a step and then there's a step and then there's a step. And, you know, you don't know, realize when that final step is there, but I see lines out on our street for the, the safety stuff that they're doing for the safe routes to school. So I thought that that was already underway, but I don't know, just want to briefly to say what they've already doing or what they plan to do. But anyway, that's, that's, it's progressing.
If I could add, just to be fair, we did receive funding for a pilot program for traffic safety, which was through Safe Route to School, so technically we have received
Yeah.
An award. There hasn't been a whole lot on that front because of COVID, obviously, hard to have large events, outreach events, which is what that was intended for. And so there has been funding for that program. This, I believe, should be for the capital improvements for some sidewalks, as well as potentially the roundabout here. But it's all essentially on this part of Cameron Shore Drive and industry.
And it'll be presented by Becky Taylor, who I don't think any of you know, but she lived out in Markola. And on New Year's Day, her and her family were driving in on Markola, had a head on, and this will be her first week back to work.
Oh, goodness.
So she was, she was a bad, bad shape person, wasn't worse. The, the daughter in the back didn't hurt as bad. But it just, she's a wonderful lady that I see at Lane Act and everything else. It just, you know, saddened to hear what she went through. And so, glad, glad she's able to come back to work a lot later. So it has, it's been a road for her. And I emailed back and forth a little bit to say, good to see you. But anyway, any other comments from the council?
To me, it's my three-year anniversary of being a Lowell resident. We bought our house on seven seven seventeen, so it is a
Congratulations.
Are we on Zoom next week?
So that is up to the council. I'd say the way things have changed, you may want to.
I think it'd be best.
Send them to the master.
Yeah, I think it'd be best.
I love seeing you guys.
We need to get as much put together before he leaves as possible.
Well, no, I was just thinking about, no, I'm thinking about NASA.
We've had such an uptick in, in Oregon, Lake County, and just that, I think.
It's awful. It's like, you can do it from home or you just come down here.
I, I think When did we extend our last day of emergency?
So it actually ran through the sixteen.
Okay, so we
There's nothing, there's nothing in our charter that says we can't have electronic meetings. However, you may be to the point of having that declaration again.
I'm wondering if we should extend it one more time.
This, this one is more appropriate than the last.
The state just did.
So.
And it, and it's interesting because the week after ours expired, that week, a lot of the other cities on our list served, were, what are you doing, what are you doing? We're all going in the same direction of letting, well, not all of them, but a number of them are going in the direction of let's buy, and then things have kind of kind of backtracking and then But we can, if there's a consensus there with the council, we can certainly prepare that resolution and bring it back.
I don't think it hurts.
Okay.
And we'll make lists for you during the week, Dirk, so when we see you next time, we can tell them to.
No.
I'm trying to get this off the list.
We all have it. Doing electronic or on paper?
Always electronic.
He just lays a little movement.
That's plausible that I have other, I have a computer. Anything else? We're adjourned at nine thirty.
All we got to hit him is if he's zoning violations, he won't be able to sell his house.
That's right.